Good evening and welcome to tonight's school board meeting. It's Monday, December ninth, two thousand nineteen, six o'clock. We're in the Susan Toll lives, the Boardroom, the seventy-seven building. I'd like to call the meeting and order and ask Mr. Toddlock to call right away, please.
All right, Mrs. Fisher.
Here.
Mr. Gayhart.
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Here.
Mr. Martel.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mrs. Ray.
Here.
I'd like to note, Mr. Scarrow is unable to be here with us this evening. And Ms. Degner is also out this evening. And Ms. Gatcher.
Here.
We do have a quorum, we will continue. I will note that this meeting has been noted as first day statutes. Judging by the audience, I'd say we have no community participation. So we'll dispense with reading that and go to the overnight travel request from the wrestling team.
They didn't even get a coat on.
I know. Thank you.
Same as usual, we've done it for three or four years now. We're going up to Bayport to compete up there. A young team this year, but they're doing really well. Really happy with last week. Saturday was really good, too. The dual Thursday, I don't know if anybody was there. I think Mr. Tadlock was there. No, I'm not sure who was there, but it was really exciting. It was a great, yeah, it was a great high school week. So, team's a lot better than I thought.
What's the next home?
We actually have a home, our first home is this week, Thursday, against West Ocean Central. And we'll be in the Sukie Gym with the spotlight.
Oh, I love that.
Very excited about that, yeah, because there's a basketball game kind of in the book.
Sure.
We're certainly okay with wrestling underneath the spotlight this week.
That's fun.
So we're really looking forward to that.
Good.
But Bayport is the same as we've done in the last few years. Not much different there.
Questions for Mr. Oles?
How many are on the wrestling team this year?
Twenty-three right now. We had twenty-eight, but a lot of kids came out only for a day, tried, and then we kind of figured that, but twenty-three. Numbers are down. Badger, late team at Badger has fifteen kids out. Two years ago, they had forty-five.
Wow.
So, yeah, wrestling. I'm going over to middle school, we're having a recruiting thing over there right from here. Trying to really work on that.
It's such a good sport. It just, it gives you so much discipline for everything in your life. That's what I...
Such a good sport for every other sport, for every age.
Right, yes, yeah, that is true.
So we're trying to change that. Our club's gone through a lot of changes. We got a great group of guys down there now.
Good.
Now we're working on that middle school thing and trying to build that up.
I'm writing to Scotty Hens's daughter, and I guess he's now coaching, maybe he's coaching at Badger. He's coaching his grandson.
Oh, my gosh.
I know.
Yeah, that might be Bigfoot.
Yeah, I don't know which one.
They're in the swing two right now. Actually, Delvin moved up to Division One, Bigfoot moved up.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, there's been some changes there, yeah.
Okay. So cool.
Yeah, so our numbers could be better, without a doubt, but we'll get there. We'll get there. We got a very good sophomore, freshman sophomore group. If they stick together, I think we're gonna really be tough in a couple of years again.
Great.
I really like it. It really opened my eyes this year so far.
Any questions? Well, I see per our policy, we do need to approve the overnight request.
Salute.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we moved and seconded to approve the overnight travel requests from the wrestling team as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thanks. For JV tournament this year and another note, we have had twenty teams at that. We have up thirty-one teams coming this year. So, I mean, we do have a lot more teams coming for that. So there's gonna be a big tournament there on the twenty-first of this month.
September fifteenth?
So that's a project. Trying to encourage the younger JV. Thirty-one teams, a big tournament.
Yeah.
So we're gonna host that in a couple of weeks, yeah.
Are you doing mid-state or are you not doing that?
Oh, we're in mid-states again. The varsity schedule's pretty much the same.
Okay.
Pretty much the same, only we're hosting, varsity's gonna host a dual meet tournament, January fourth. That's one different thing, we decided to host again.
Okay.
A varsity tournament. So we're gonna have dual meets. We have eight teams that signed up right away. We didn't have any trouble filling it. And so we're on all dual meets for that. So it's kind of a dual meet bracketed term. So that's about the only change.
You've got somebody running it and they need help, have them get ahold of me and see if I'm available.
Nice, okay. January fourth is the varsity. Thanks.
And I forgot, I'll try to get it to you by your meet or something. Coach Peterson, a lectures series, it was given to me and I'm gonna extend it to you.
Oh, nice.
Opportunity with Coach Peterson's.
Yeah, good, very good.
And he's writing the area, so.
Nice, thanks.
I'm ready to talk to him.
Thanks.
All right. Options, Career and College Academy presentation.
Oh.
Yeah.
I don't know why it started.
I'm Sarah Stone, I'm the principal for the Options Career and College Academy. And we, I had, we had asked some students if they would mind coming to the meeting, but their schedules, which they'll explain a little bit, prevented them from being here tonight. So we did some virtual things with them to do that. So Career and College Academy is about choices. So they're starting where they're going, they're starting where they are, and then they're going anywhere that they choose to go to. So we're gonna discuss the different choices that they have as a student over at Options. So first of all, they could do completely virtual. So students could have all the courses delivered to them through a variety of vendors. Typically, for core content, it's Apex. And so this teacher on record, which is Juliet Lena Luskowski, is the student teacher who helps us to select those courses for students. And she monitors their growth, their assignments, the time on task, that kind of thing, and the daily participation or attendance. There's virtual learning with blended support. That is indicative of our work sessions, which is twice a week for three hours each time. Students can come for the entire three hours, or they can come for a portion of the time. We have a volunteer, as well as Juliet, and then I jump in when she needs me as well. And we have students who are in the room for those work sessions. And it could be anywhere from doing a walk with a student if they're struggling and feeling frustrated, to sitting down and helping them figure out math problems. Not that I'm doing physics, that's beyond me. But we are there to support those students in that face-to-face with the teacher and the adults in that area. And then we also have blended learning, which is virtual and students taking courses at our local high school. So we have some students who are taking one or two classes, up to maybe three or four. And those students typically take things such as lab classes like chemistry, or family and consumer education, or classes that might be a little more difficult online, like Spanish or German. So those are, that gives us that flexibility for students who want to be, still go toward brick and mortar, but still have that flexibility with some of our virtual classes. What we have noted for all three choices is that some kids don't do very well with all virtual, so sometimes we give them non-virtual or offline classes, depending upon that student's needs. They can access extracurriculars and sports at our high school, if they so choose. We currently have a student doing FFA, who's completely virtual with Options, but she wanted that opportunity. Students who are in good standing may participate in our activities or classes at a technical school or at our Wisconsin University assistant schools as well. And then those students who are enrolled only part-time can have up to two classes. So that's for all three of those choices. So what does that look like for our students? We have students statewide at this point. We have students in Port Edward, Appleton, Bloomer, and New Berlin, besides the students we have in Walworth County. Human Services has turned out to be quite a resource for some of our students who are north. They have referred students to us because they feel like it would be a good match, which is lovely. And then our other, others for students who may have medical, or they're dancing, or things like that, so they can't be in a brick and mortar, so this gives them that opportunity to be completely virtual and still get their courses. Our blended work sessions, we've had upwards in the twenties of kids, twenty-plus kids who have been in there, to just a few, a handful. Transportation, we have dial-a-ride VIP services, which allows students who are not necessarily in Elkhorn or who aren't driving yet, to be able to come to those work sessions. And then our blended learning, I talked about that with EHS. What's nice is that those kids who are splitting their day can maybe start at the high school, head to the hub during some one or two hours in the day, work on that class they're doing virtually, and then maybe head off to another class. So it gives them that flexibility in a structured setting so that they can be proactive in their studies. Spring, our students who are headed off to Gateway are doing things such as IT, they're doing welding, diesel accounting, graphic design. I spoke with a student tonight, he wants to be an EMT, so we're looking at that as well. And then I do have one student who is headed to UW Milwaukee at the Milwaukee Sharks Station, and she is going to be pre-med. So that's all for this next session. So, our student testimonials, Hannah is, joined us this fall, and she is a junior. Stacia was one of our Options students prior to this year, and she is a senior. And Calvin joined us this fall, and he is a senior as well. So we'll start with Hannah.
Hi, I am Hannah Woodward, and I'm a junior in high school. Outside of taking my regular high school classes, the Options, I've also been given the opportunity to take sign language at Gateway College. I come in contact with a lot of deaf and hard-of-hearing people. And by learning sign language, I've not only been able to express myself more, more without the use of words, but I've hoped to be able to confluence sign language and to be able to communicate with deaf people at work and in my church. I also hope through the Options program to be able to go to the college and learn more languages, since I've always been interested in that. And next year, outside of more languages, I also hope to get a jumpstart on my college credits and to explore career options.
And Stacia? Recorded it in her car today at lunch, so.
Hi, my name is Stacia Brewer, and I am a senior at Elkhorn Options. I have been taking Gateway classes since my junior year. I started the fall semester. I started in getting my business degree. And then this year, I switched to IT. I am going for my computer support specialist associate's degree. And then this next semester, I am getting my certificate to be a full-stack web developer. I would never have this opportunity if it weren't for Options and their support they give to us financially for taking our classes. I love Gateway so much, and I really appreciate everything that Options allows me to do. I was really bored in high school. High school classes, they are really exciting because they're not anything that truly interests me. So when I started my Gateway classes, that really changed for me because I got to do something I love. And it's helped me not only get a four-point-O in my Gateway classes, but it's also helped me get great grades in my high school classes because I have a balance. So I get to do the things I love, and then I have to do the stuff that I don't really like, but it's kind of a toss-up and helps me get it all done. So this program has been really, really amazing, and I hope more students take advantage of it. It's awesome, so thank you.
She's also juggling a job as well. So that's what we find with some of our students, they're juggling all of it. And then Calvin gave us a video recording.
Hey, guys.
Hey, guys.
My name is Calvin Collins, and unfortunately, I was not able to be here tonight. I have class. So I just wanted to take a few minutes and just talk about the Options Academy and what I think about it. And to be quite honest, I think it's a pretty great program that you guys got going on. I really enjoy it, and I think that most people who would be in it and have the opportunity to be in it would also enjoy it. So right now, I'm doing my high school online. I only have three classes. I have bowling for my gym credit, and then I'm taking AP literature and composition for English credit, and then just AP Spanish. Last semester, I had physics instead of bowling. And so far, the high school stuff, it's going pretty well. It's nice because you can do it, not really on your own pace, but on your own time. So there's not really a set time where you need to do everything. The lessons, plans, and curriculum, I really enjoy it. And it's, it's very well taught, there's plenty of resources. There's a variety of activities, too, and once you're graded on, so it's not strictly quizzes and tests. You have projects in there, too, essays, stuff like that. And another big part of the Options program is the Gateway curriculum. So, or like the Gateway programs. So right now, I'm in the Diesel program at Gateway. So I'm in, I'm gonna be finishing up my first semester of that on Friday. So for that, I have classes every night from five to ten, Monday through Thursday. And it, it's pretty cool. We just basically just work on stuff with Diesel engines in it. Construction equipment, tractors, semis, stuff like that. And I really enjoy that. It's been a wonderful experience. And, yeah, I don't think I could be more grateful for the opportunity that I've been given. And just in general, how great Options is. I love the curriculum, like I said before. It's very well taught, plenty of resources. I've taken online classes in the past. The quality of Options and the Apex Academy, it's just, it's unmatched. So, yeah, that's, that's pretty much what I think about the Options Academy. So, yeah, thanks for giving me the opportunity to tell you guys about it. Thanks.
So, those are just a small amount of our students. We are at about sixty-nine students currently, and continue to have people call. She said Friday was pretty busy, and the emails I was getting, it was pretty busy. So as we move forward, our future thinking is that we would like to increase our student enrollment at UW campuses, as well as our technical college. And we'd like to jump-start some more college credits for students. We have a couple of kids who are doing certificates. Hannah's brother is doing a security certificate. You heard Stacia talk about her IT certificate. And then the student today was for EMT. So they're starting to look at that as a way to jump in, get, get a feel for a pathway, a career pathway. So increasing that, increasing the opportunity by capturing kids sooner so they can finish a tech diploma. And then, of course, we've had parents ask about apprenticeships and other pathway opportunities that we are exploring and trying to build as we go, as we are applying to colleges. So, any questions?
I do have a question. Are they missing out, like the financial literacy? How does that all work into where we're doing this?
That's a great question. They're required to do four years of English, three years of social science, three years of math, three years of social, or science, three semesters of PE, health, and then also personal financial literacy, as well as the eight-and-a-half credits for electives. So they're, they're the same requirement as our high school.
I just wanted to make sure, because that's one thing that I think sometimes, yeah, they don't get into history. Sometimes they don't get into that.
Right.
But financial literacy, if anything, I get comments, kids don't know how to balance a checkbook. Kids don't know how to, they don't understand, and I, you know, I've... Yeah, a lot of people don't. But, you know, they, they need to know, you know, how it all works. And if they're going off into college and, and everything, it's really good to have that basic background at least to start with, so.
Some of our parents have commented on the fact that being able to step on a campus with guidance makes them feel more comfortable as a, as a parent.
Okay.
So the student who is headed to, she's pre-med, is, is working on something else right now. And then, so she's very excited about going on pre-med, and Dad said, well, I can talk to you about this. Can we, can we get her in a dorm to, to go on campus full-time? And maybe, maybe not? So it's, they're starting to think that way about having, having kids have that experience with guidance, which is, which is good.
Well, in other words, they're looking out, they're promoting their children, really getting into it, I guess. That's what I would think.
And these students who were speaking, all three are seniors?
No, Hannah was a junior.
But by that point, a lot of their required courses are completed, so they have a lot more open time in their schedule to take those additional courses that they want. And I forgot, what was the end man's name?
Calvin.
Calvin. Like Calvin, what's impressive, he could, I'm sure he probably has his English program done. He could just do the diesel mechanics class, but he was still taking the AP Spanish and...
Right. It was impressive to see that he's working on that, too.
While doing, so he still has all his pathways open to the four-year, but now already the traits are typically.
Right. That's great.
I have to tell you, because we were at Children's Hospital today, the doctor brought it up several times and pushed if my son needed medical excuses for his school foundations. And said, we've had to really fight with a lot of districts and schools to make sure that the students are still, you know, keeping up. And, and I had to go back and forth with this doctor for almost fifteen minutes to explain, no, we have this virtual academy, he, you know, he does this blended, he can go back, because they don't want him going back full-time, you know, in spring. And I said, nope, don't worry about it. I don't know that he ever wants to go back, because he's loving it so much, and he wants to go to Gateway now. But it was interesting being on the parent's side of it, and actually telling our doctor that we didn't need their help. And I think that was rare for her to hear that, especially, you know, being in the Milwaukee area where Children's is. And, yeah, I had to convince her that I, I was okay. I don't think she hears that very much, so I just wanted to tell you that.
Thank you. Thank you.
You've done a lot for our family.
We do have, with the growth, there is a position that's still posted, or I think we posted as a couple of part-time positions looking at, because they need additional help at the high school program as it's continuing to grow. Which, you know, so if there's people out there watching the video, one of you twelve, who happen to be certified or are interested in teaching, I know we're looking for help in science and special education.
Specialized.
And math, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Sarah.
So that's a pre-gets segue into April twenty-twenty referendum discussion.
All right. And Sarah, I feel the mention, please let the students know, I really appreciate them taking the time to read the video. It's a great hearing from them. All right. So this presentation that we created was intended to be able to share out as a document to the public, the community, parents. So the, it's a little wordy and so forth, but we wanted to create that narrative and give a good overview of what we're looking at in regards to the acquisition update of St. Patrick's School, as well as additional maintenance and technology funds for the school district. So, start out, why St. Patrick's School? We wanted to make sure the public understood that we're in year three of a five-year lease. There's no guarantee that after that five-year lease, that we'll be able to continue to lease that building. The program's grown to over two hundred students. And with the, with the addition of that Career and College Academy, it continues to grow. So it's definitely something that we're utilizing the entire building, and something that the program's been around for, what are we in, our sixth, fifth year officially?
One year as a program, and then our fifth year as a charter.
As a charter school. So six years total between those, it's stable, continues to grow, and is one of the few programs within the school district that operates in the black. So it brings in more revenue than what's expended to operate that. And that helps support other programs around the school district. So the, the other rationale for looking at that is that the two thousand-two debt is falling off of our debt load. And so right now, that'll enable us to, you know, do the project with no tax impact in relation to the acquisition and the remodeling portion. So we talked about it being the right space. Our, this is our growth chart. If the line, the dark line is our actual number, the white gray line would be without four-year-old kindergarten. So we, that's where you see that little spike, and it continues to grow at a relatively steady pace. There's been a couple ebbs and flows, but the district, you know, has continued to grow since the nineteen-nineties. And the Options Charter School and Career and College Academy provides a non-traditional learning opportunities for the students, similar to what you just heard about. But in addition, it benefits the students who are in the traditional buildings because it also frees up space within those buildings. If we were to take the two hundred students from the Options program and push those into the regular brick-and-mortar buildings, it would be, you know, crowded and out of space. And when we started the program, we started the program in the district office. It out through that, and we moved it to Jackson and Tibbetts and used empty classroom space. And then we entered the lease agreement at St. Pat's as that program has grown.
Basically started there with a couple dozen kids and a coordinator.
Right.
And grew it to hundreds of students.
Right upstairs, and yes. And these floors are kind of noisy. I don't know how schools back in the old days, but they, yeah, you hear when the people are bugging, especially if they're dribbling basketballs. But we feel it's the right building. The, the building has significant amount of acreage, providing space potential for future needs, whatever that may be, if there is a need in the future. It was designed as a school. We've looked at, when we went to move into St. Pat's initially, we vetted and looked at buildings all over the city of Elkhorn. And we looked at the old Mann Brothers property. We looked at office buildings, places downtown, before we even envisioned being at two hundred-plus students. And by far, St. Patrick's was the best option then, is still the best option now. It's laid out as a school, built and designed as a school. And also purchasing St. Pat's allows the district to preserve a building that has good bones, good structure, and allows us to be, and are good stewards of the community. We've seen what happened to the old Lakeland School, that may have been able to be utilized, you know, if it had been occupied, you know, right away, or that, you know, money put into it. But would hate to see St. Pat's go the same way or direction as that school. Here's St. Pat's and some photos. You'll see up above, and, you know, we can certainly provide more photos later. But it's hard to see in that, that small area. But it's a school, you walk into it, you know, Monday through Friday, you're gonna see kids engaged in learning activities, playing on the playground, performing in their, their school plays and their drama, and, you know, actively engaged in their learning and having a lot of excitement and being there, even though they're not there every day of the week typically. It does have some needs, though. It's about updates all throughout the building. That's not a swimming pool in the bottom, that's the boiler room. There's, at that point, I think the water level was down. But, you know, it's an issue that's, that's being addressed. The boilers are old. It, it needs a lot of work, but again, the structure itself is good. And we could really refresh it and bring that building up to speed. And because of the student population, right now, we only need four of the six urinals to work. It's sufficient for our needs. But as that grows, we'd like that to get fixed. We feel it's the, the right price. The, the price that St. Patrick's is asking for the building is within the market value, according to, you know, the appraisal that we had done on that, for the acreage and the building combined. This is a satellite view of the property, and I, the, including the building right here, plus the sixteen-and-a-half acres that are included in the building, which you could see would give plenty of flexibility for future needs, if there were any. The CG Schmidt gave us an estimate that to build a comparable building from a square-footage standpoint would cost approximately twice the amount, if you were to go and build new, than to remodel it at the... would cost approximately twice the amount if you were to go and build new than to remodel it at the 5.9 million price tag. And so by using this approach, we address our school district's base needs at approximately half the cost of building a similarly sized school, while again restoring, maintaining a building within the community. We felt it's the right time, because again, the, the middle school and Jackson debt are nearly paid for. And because of the timing of the referendum, we can structure our debt that it'll coincide with the drop-off. And because it's a relatively smaller project, it still gives us flexibility down the road for future needs. We're not looking to bond it up for the 20-year max. We can still build in a slight drop-off in the, the tax debt five years down the road. So it doesn't lock the district into an exorbitant tax bill that would really put a, a future burden on residents if there were to be a, a need that comes up. Construction costs are on the rise and they're, you know, waiting and roughly, they're running about 5% is what we're told, some cases higher than that a year. And waiting, deferring that just increased the cost of what the overall project would be. And also right now, we still have interest costs at all-time lows. So district operation, that's the building, I think I'll pause there. Are there any questions in relation to the, the building project itself?
Jason, how many, so we have approximately 200 students now that attend. And then what portion of those students attend, like, do they attend one day a week or two days a week or?
Yes, so why don't I, would you like to speak to that? I don't want to spill your thunder, Tricia, in regards to
Sure.
Because we have a, a mix of some different program offerings, so that depends on how many days they'll be there.
We have 80 students that attend on Tuesdays.
Okay.
We have about 70 that attend on Thursday, those are different students.
Yep.
And then we have about 40 students that attend on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays.
Oh, okay.
Then we have high school. And that's four catered eight.
Okay.
High school, we have Wednesdays from 11:30 to 2:30, we have high school students on Wednesdays and Fridays.
Okay.
And then Mondays and Fridays and part of Wednesdays, we're servicing students for specialized, specialized instruction, RTI groups and things like that.
This sounds like a Tetris.
It is. Scheduling.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so the building is, is, is used daily by students.
Sure. So what is the potential, what's our cap, I guess, is what I'm saying, like, do we, we have room to grow even further in the current building as, as it would be remodeled?
Yes.
Okay. Like how many, how many more students could we take on?
Um, I would say
I know that's a hard question.
It depends on what range.
It depends on what program we're on.
I believe CG Schmidt, CG Schmidt said that that was roughly a 250-student school, roughly. So if they're
There'd be 250 in there.
And right now, we're not even close to that.
No.
Okay, that's, that's kind of what it's like.
With the Tetris thing, yeah.
Right.
Yes, I, I think it's your highest point.
We could add another, you know, a hundred.
You could double it if they were in the right category.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay, got it.
Yeah. Well, it's a very good question, but yeah, so the way it's yeah, we, we have room for growth. And I don't anticipate, because a lot of our growth now is coming from not necessarily students that are going in on the programming on that, that day-to-day. But we do still have, we could probably about double that internal capacity for that face-to-face service.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't getting ourselves into a situation where
We would outgrow it.
We would outgrow it, no, that's a really good question, yeah.
Okay, as far, any other questions on the billing portion? All right, as far as the district operational needs, we have building maintenance and technology. And both of these needs are, are constant needs that are always there. I wish that our revenue limits would keep up with the cost of inflation and that we could just, you know, be able to operate off of our current operational budget. But something that I think is important to recognize is that on our spending per pupil, we operate around the bottom 2% in the entire state. So 98, that means, you know, roughly 98% of the school districts in the state get, have more money per pupil to expend on their operations. So we, we utilize the monies very efficiently, we maximize those. But we do recognize that in order to maintain those buildings, to keep them high-quality, safe and clean as, and presentable as they are, we get compliments all the time on that. We need to have those revenues to help us be able to do that. Currently, our maintenance budget is $300,000 a year, which for a district this size and the number of buildings that we have, it's amazing that we're able to accomplish what we are able to. And in large part, we've been able to do that because the community's been generous in passing referendums that allowed us to knock out a lot of large maintenance needs, you know, in between or at certain intervals as we move forward. And that really helped catch us up a lot. But we really feel that that maintenance and technology budget would benefit from being increased by another $200,000. We have approximately 740,000 square feet of district space, 190 acres of property, and that's currently. And our school buildings range from 1887 to 2016. And arguably, the 1887 building is one of the best-in-shape buildings on, on the mall because of the updates and the remodeling that's, that's taken place. The middle school, I think people, people are blown away when they walk in the middle school, that it's 18 years old now and
It doesn't seem like it.
Yeah, and with that, you know, my home is similar to 18 years old. And so the furnace starts to go out, the water heater, the, you just have certain things that their lifespans start hitting at that point. And likewise, on these larger buildings, even though they're industrial size, you start having things that need to be replaced around that timeframe. St. Patrick's would add 20,000 square feet and 16.5 acres to those totals. The annual maintenance needs, I included a hyperlink to this of people, and I'll send this out to parents, the community. We do plan out ahead our maintenance projects and tackle those in a very methodical manner and do prioritization. And, you know, there are things that get deferred because we just don't have the monetary funds to cover those. But we figure out a way to do that. And you can take a look at this list if you want, it includes, you know, the maintenance work that we plan on doing for the 2019, 2020 school year and then future maintenance projects as well. We also have a roof assessment, we partner with, not the government IRS.
Industrial Roofing Services.
Industrial Roofing Services.
Not to be confused with the IRS.
And they survey, they take core samples of the roofs and they look at those and they, they help you lay out, here's your plan and your work that you're going to need to do on your, your roofs. Because roofing is a, you know, it's a major outlay and something that you need to stay on top of. The good news is our, our roofs overall are in good shape right now. And we've stayed up on top of that. We also have the hardscaping, building exteriors, walls, doors, windows. And those metal doors on the outside of a, a school building that, we live in Wisconsin, they rust. They run, what are they about? If you have to do the whole entryway, you're talking several thousand dollars.
$15,000.
Yeah. A door, the high school has how many outside doors, about 40?
Yeah.
Yeah, so cha-ching, 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 it adds up. And then we have the building interior, painting, the ceiling and floors. We also have the technology needs in order to keep current with the changing technology, including the classroom technology, smart boards, projectors, computers. Our smart boards are at the end of their life cycle and relevance, there's new technology related to that. And as they start to fail, we're replacing those. You know, those are added costs and expenses, not huge in the grand scheme of things. But other costs that people don't see are the soft, software licenses, internet filtering, and our infrastructure that keeps our system humming and, and working so that the kids and teachers can utilize it effectively. So our recommendation on that is, in, in total, is to address the school building needs through a two-question referendum on April 7th, 2020. And again, really, these questions are two completely separate questions. The first question, one, being a total of $6,920,000, which would include acquiring the St. Patrick's property for $955,000 and then providing monies needed to complete the updates. So it's not a new, but a refreshed, almost like-new building in many aspects. When you walk into it, it'll be restored to its glory in the, when was it, 1960s, 1950s? But, but it'll be a wonderful-looking building, the layout's wonderful, and, and they would really bring it up to speed, abate, you know, the areas that need the asbestos abating, it would update the HVAC systems, the lighting, the electrical systems, and refresh all the classrooms, the flooring, the walls, the ceiling. So it really will feel in many aspects like a, a new, you know, retro building. Question two is the operational question, it's a very, I would say, a, a very it's the amount that we need that would really help alleviate that budget, be able to get us that maintenance budget, maintenance budget to that $500,000 a year that we'd like to see. Now, it does include some of that technology basis, but it's not a large recurring referendum. You're seeing in neighboring districts, school districts asking for well over a million a year. So when we put it out there, our last recurring referendum was $300,000, which is probably one of the smaller recurring referendums, you know, asked in the state. This, I'm sure, would be one of the smallest recurring referendums, again, you know, ever asked in the state. So it's, we're trying to be good stewards, we're not shooting for the moon, asking for a large dollar amount that would give us a whole lot of breathing room. We feel it's a realistic number and we want to be sensitive to the tax impact that exists on that question. The project schedule, if this were to pass, and this is hard to see in, in this aspect, but the first component is the design and inspection and then some early site work. Because of the design work and the timing of the referendum, the bulk of our actual building work, interior work and so forth, wouldn't be able to be completed until the following summer. CG Schmidt did bring up if the school district were interested in contracting to get the design work done prior to the referendum, then that could potentially speed up that timeframe. They're going to get to gather some numbers and that's something we could present to the board. My hesitancy is there is a risk there that you do the design work and then you don't have the referendum passed. The cost benefit could be if construction costs are going up 5% a year, you could save hypothetically 5%
Right.
From what the bids could be if you waited here. So the cost impact. For question one, because we do have those bonds dropping off from the middle school and Jackson, our projections from Baird Financial show a zero dollar or zero cent per $1,000 valuation impact on the mill rate. So regardless of what the value of your home is, that additional debt is just replacing, the debt is falling off and there should not be any tax increase or impact on it.
But if you multiply that zero times five, it's still zero. Just so, you know, but people don't often see that, they look at 100,000, well, my house is worth more than that.
Yes.
But it's still zero.
Yeah. Yes, so if you have a $2.5 million home, it's still zero.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yes.
Well, it's, people don't always see that part.
Yep. It's a great point to bring up, Mark. Now, question two, because this is additional, this is, you know, increasing our revenue limit by $200,000 a year over what it currently is, there is a cost to that. And that cost impact is $9 on a $100,000 home. We left the example, and I know, I hear this every time we do this, well, there's no homes that are $100,000, why do you give that example? Because it's easy to multiply. So yes, we know your home party is $100,000, but you can multiply nine by whatever your home amount is. So that's the estimated mill rate cost for a $200,000 a year recurring referendum. This shows the hypothetical future referendum mill rates. You can see that they stay, they would go up slightly with that increased recurring referendum. But then again, we have a structural drop-off in 2026. That would include both the bonding plus the recurring referendum. And this is just a chart showing you where the municipal bond rates are. And we have one of the highest bond ratings in the state of Wisconsin for a public school district at a double A plus.
Double A two.
Double A two? We tried to talk them into a triple A, but they said that we don't have enough property value, so it was worth a try. They laughed. But yeah, so we're a double A two, for our size, it's, is good.
Well, maybe now we won't.
No, not that, proper like, we need a lot more property value.
Like, like our, like, the people who live in the different
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Like Madison has a lot of property value with all the businesses and property.
Yeah, I thought you meant like the school.
Right, no, right, yeah.
Yep, that's, I'm glad you brought that up, though. Any questions related to that?
I think I go back to, I remember, you know, years ago, and I probably said it once, but I remember years ago when we started that program, we started, like I said, with a few dozen kids and a coordinator and how it's really grown. And the opportunities that it affords to kids that just don't fit within the traditional educational system is, is amazing. There was a vision there years ago and I think that we're, I think that we're there now. You know, it took a little while to get there, but it wasn't that long, really.
No.
So it's
I know, I remember when Sarah was there and she got overwhelmed really in a short amount of time because it grew so quickly.
Yeah, it grew very quickly.
Yeah, and, and the program, as I said, with it operating in the, in the black for the past several years, it's really sustained the school district from having to go to recurring referendum and it's allowed us to maintain our other programming. And that's why we can operate and provide to our kids what we can while being in the bottom 2% on spending per pupil. So it, it benefits, whether a parent or a family has a kid in that program or not, it's benefited every kid in the entire school district. All right. Next up then is
This is St. Pat's School property.
This is our official offer to purchase St. Patrick's property. And it's something that the board through our closed sessions have negotiated and worked with and had discussion. Are there any other questions prior to making a formal approval to move forward with the purchasing?
Anybody's looking for a motion?
I move to approve the purchase of St. Pat's School property as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion?
And this is contingent upon the referendum passing.
Correct.
Just so the public knows.
Yes.
Anything else? Has been moved and seconded to approve the purchase of St. Pat's School property as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayer?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yeah.
And Ms. Kautcher?
Yes.
Initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed 6.9, uh, 6,920,000.
This is the official resolution, we've worked with Baird no, I'm sorry, Corals and Brady to make sure that the language is clear, so that it's legally compliant and that we are able to utilize this as the question, this is the question that you would see on the ballot. And it needs formal approval by the school.
Questions, pardon members? Otherwise looking for a motion? Anybody's looking for a motion to approve?
I move to approve the initial resolution, authorization general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $6,920,000 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution, providing for a referendum election on the question of the approval of an initial resolution, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $6,920,000, and a resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by $200,000 for recurring purposes as presented. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Gotcha?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carried. All right. Resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed the revenue limit by $200,000 for recurring purposes.
This is what the question number two would be on the ballot.
Questions? Anybody's looking for a motion to approve?
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by $200,000 for recurring purposes as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution, authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by $200,000 for recurring purposes as presented. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Gotcha?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carried. All right. Resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by $200,000 for recurring purposes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution, authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by $200,000 for recurring purposes as presented. Any further discussion?
I think this goes to just educating the public again on the impact of that, and the reality is, look at it as one-night outing, whether it's dinner or something.
Investing in our community.
You know, that's probably the best way to sell it, is, you know, go out to the movies and buy popcorn and soda you spent more than it's going to cost you this year for your contribution to our community. So it's educating them that way.
Thanks.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes, Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Gotcha?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Motion carried.
To Paul's point on that, something that I've shared with people in the past is, what impact do quality schools, quality, you know, well-maintained schools have on your property values? I can guarantee you it's going to be more than nine bucks a year.
Absolutely.
You know, to continue, and I know that the investment's much greater than nine bucks a year, but the return, I feel, is greater than that for our future.
All right. Resolution providing for referendum election on the question of the approval of an initial resolution, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $6,920,000, and a resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by $200,000 for recurring purposes.
Can you explain what this motion is doing that the other two did not?
So the first two approve the questions.
Okay.
This one approves going to referendum.
So this is really putting it on the ballot.
Got it.
And we could have picked and changed those each separately before this, but since they were both approved, now it's as one.
Okay. Got it.
All right. Any questions other than that? Anybody's looking for a motion?
I'll go for them. I'm going to go for them tonight. I need to approve the resolution providing for a referendum election on the question of the approval of an initial resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $6,920,000, and a resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by $200,000 for recurring purposes as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution, providing for a referendum election on the question of the approval of an initial resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $6,920,000, and a resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by $200,000 for recurring purposes as presented. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Gotcha?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Motion carried. See that on the ballot? It's on voters' hands.
Do we have any plans on how to get the information out?
Yeah, we're following the same template as the last two referendums, so same activities, same communication plan, format, video, social media, community connections, email. Tomorrow, I'll send out press releases and communication out to parents, all teachers.
If you have meetings and you want me to attend, let me know when they are, and I'll see what I can do, because if I can explain the tax angle, that might be kind of helpful.
That'd be great. Yeah, we'll reach out to the community service corps.
Sure.
Yep.
Yeah, if there's, are we planning on doing any, because I know when we did the other one, yeah, we had like an open house, we had time for Q and A, things like that. Okay.
Yep. So, yeah.
Are we going to try and hold that at the option?
Yeah, I would say there.
Okay.
Yep. So Jody is, we have a whole team, we meet weekly from here on out to lay that out and get through that communication.
It'll be a whirlwind from here on out.
Yeah, it will be.
It's a little bit of a whirlwind. It'll spin around the corners.
Yeah, don't tell me.
Yeah, but, you know, Jody's been through it twice now and is really good. We also coincided with, the Donovan group is helping with some, you know, video, the video production piece, which we didn't really ever get nailed down very well last time. But then we also have Katie Hoffman on the team, who's fantastic with graphic arts. So we have some different talent resources as well, and we still have the people who were here last time that have more experience, so we're, yeah, it should go really well.
Good.
All right. All right. Move on to approval of school board meeting minutes. Should have those attached. Closed session minutes were passed out. Any questions? Comments? Anybody's looking for a motion to approve our minutes?
I move to approve the minutes up to November 25, 2019, regular closed session school board meetings as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So move and second to approve the minutes of November 25, 2019, regular closed session school board meetings as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Abstain.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Gotcha?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mrs. Gotcha?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Motion carried. General and other fund bills.
The general and other fund bills this evening covers checks number 138230 through 138360, wire transfers 392 through 396, ACH checks 130 through 152, and voided check number 138229, in a combined amount of $917,674.41. And then there was a memo providing some additional information on several of the bills in the board packet.
Questions, board members? Anybody's looking for a motion to approve our bills?
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of December 9, 2019, check numbers 138230 to 138360, wire transfers 392 to 396, ACH check numbers 130 to 152, and voided check number 138229, in a combined amount of $917,674.41 as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So move and seconded to approve the general and other fund bills of December 9, 2019, check numbers 138230 to 138360, wire transfers 392 to 396, ACH check numbers 130 to 152, and voided check number 138229, in a combined amount of $917,674.41 as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
So move and seconded to approve the general and other fund bills of December 9, 2019, checks numbered 138230 to 138360, wire transfers 392 to 396, ACH check numbers 130 to 152, voided check number 138229, in a combined amount of $917,674.41 as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Gotcha?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Motion carried. Let's take your part.
Okay. At the high school last week, the girls' basketball lost, but the boys won. Over the weekend, some high school students performed in the musical A Christmas Carol, and it was a total success.
It was fantastic. It was really good.
It was fantastic, it was. Also, on Saturday, the boys' swimming team took their first at their tournament, and last Friday, Hosea had over 20 volunteers at the opened Armlet Gala, which was down at Gretchen. And then Student Council is also hosting the Giving Tree Drive, that students and teachers can grab an ornament off the tree to donate to Twin Oaks. At the middle school, they had a PBIS assembly. There wasn't too much about what they did, but they said they had an assembly. And the middle school student council led a section at the Wisconsin Association of School Counselors. At the Abbott lunch, students had the challenge of flipping over a sheet they were standing on. This simulation was you can't touch the feet to the carpet. They worked extremely well together and quickly found a solution, which is a huge part of what Abbott is trying to teach. And at the elementarys, Tippett's fifth graders are learning about the United States geography by navigating through Google Exपtation. At Tippett's, the third graders are electronic, are using electronic resources to create two-column notes. And similarly to the high school student council, a few teachers at Jackson Elementary made adorable kitty ornaments for the Lakeland Animal Shelter. Overall, the past few weeks have been a success.
Personnel, a recommendation of district administrator personnel.
Okay. We want to thank once again Mr. Gordon for his service and that he's provided to the school district, doing the math. This is his third retirement.
I was just going to add, over the time since he's retired.
And I know he really thinks he's done now for other months.
He can go on.
We'll see. We did come, they're coming back in this fall.
Graduation.
Graduation.
Yeah, I was going to say, the table graduation.
This will be, this will not be, yes, he will not be running graduation.
Oh.
Who has he trained?
I believe Vicki Knoll will be.
Who?
Vicki Knoll.
Did he train her?
He did.
Oh, okay.
She was there, she was there last year.
Okay, good.
I'm guessing it won't miss a beat. Vicki, Kyle, probably run it somewhere. We also have, but in all sincerity, we want to give a big thank you to Kyle for his service, again, as a German teacher, and everything he's done for our kids. That's a hard position to find, is our German teachers.
Excellent teacher, one of my teachers years ago.
Then we have the resignation of Mr. Tom Lee, as he's stepping down as the head football coach. He won't return for the 2020-2021 school year. Tom, a lot of thanks, I believe he's been, oh, head coach close to a decade now, does that sound right, Paul, or?
Time flies, I can't keep track.
In the program, close to two decades, I believe. So we want to give a lot of thanks for Tom. If you know Tom, he's one of the most positive, optimistic individuals I've ever met. I, yeah, just a phenomenal individual, great example, very young man, so I want to thank him for all of his years of service. We also have the resignation from Brian Holsen, who was serving the past couple of years as a middle school football coordinator, and want to thank him for his time in that position. And then we have the appointment of Taylor Fettig, who will be joining us as the school social worker, replacing Brooke Chacola. Taylor will join us after the start of the school year. Taylor is from Elkhorn, but has been working in Janesville, is a school social worker for, oh, seven years now. So she brings some great experience and kind of into the community, so we want to welcome Taylor.
And I'm hoping not to have any interviews during the month of January, okay?
Any questions, anybody's looking for a motion to approve our personnel recommendation?
I move to approve the personnel recommendation sheet for December 9, 2019, including new employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background check and district mandated drug screening as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So move and seconded to approve the personnel recommendation sheet for December 9, 2019, including new employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background check and district mandated drug screening as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. School gifts?
We have two school gifts this evening. The Elkhorn Lions Club has donated books to 4K students valued at $200,000. And then we have an anonymous donor that has donated 791 books to 4K parents students valued at $2,373. Seventy-one books.
Looking for a motion to approve our generous gifts?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
So move and seconded to approve the gifts of the Elkhorn Lions Club and an anonymous donor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Revised support staff employee handbook. Anybody's looking for a motion to approve?
I move to approve the revised support staff employee handbook as presented.
Questions, board members? Anybody's looking for a motion to approve?
I move to approve the revised support staff employee handbook as presented. I believe.
Anybody's looking for a motion to approve?
I believe.
Anybody's looking for a motion to approve?
I believe.
I believe.
Anybody's looking for a motion to approve?
I believe.
Anybody's looking for a motion to approve?
I believe.
Anybody's looking for a motion to approve?
I believe.
Anybody's looking for a motion to approve?
I believe.
Anybody's looking for a motion to approve?
I believe.
Anybody's looking for a motion to approve?
I believe.
Anybody's looking for a motion to approve?
I believe.
Anybody's looking for a motion to approve?
I believe.
Anybody's looking for a motion to approve?
I believe.
The Personnel Committee reviewed a proposal. Bill, would you like to speak to this?
Sure. This is really looking at trying to put some consistency in terms of our paid holidays for all of our employees, and we've got a couple of groups that really currently don't have the New Year's Eve Day off, although they're our regular employees. And the purpose of this is to bring them kind of in consistency with some of our office staff and other 12-month employees. The history behind this is some of these individuals were covered by separate collective bargaining agreements back in, we had collective bargaining agreements. So as we were kind of moving forward with our handbook, um, it seemed to make sense to kind of move them in compliance. Probably something that could've came to the board even earlier, but as we were kind of sneaking up on this time of the year, we thought this would be a good opportunity to kind of bring that into alignment with the rest of our employees. So the main groups that this would apply to that are currently done would be our twelve-month custodians and then our building level secretaries. That's really the two groups. Um, the other thing, I think there's, there's a language piece at the very bottom of this document too, that we would be looking at eliminating. It talked about PTO used in lieu of a holiday, which really doesn't, isn't applicable any longer. You know, it's just really kind of cleaning up the language in the handbook.
Questions, board members? Always looking for a motion to approve.
I move to approve the revised support staff employee handbook as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moving to second to approve the revised support staff employee handbook as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Uh, Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yeah.
Ms. Gotcha?
Yes.
Motion carried. Uh, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen audit report.
This evening, the school board is being asked to accept the audit report as it's been developed by Riley Penner and Ben's before the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year. I'm gonna assume you don't want me to go through the seventy pages of this report. Um, but I'll just quickly highlight, uh, a couple of points. There's a lot of information.
I did, I said no.
I, I think I shared with the board, you know, back in the day, when I started in this business, I think the audit report was like twelve pages.
Well, that's because there's so much language that they have to put in.
There's so much language and things that come into play here, but there's a couple of sections here. One is what's called the management discussion and analysis. And that's really prepared by the school district. It's kind of the front-end component that kind of summarizes some of the information in the document and it's developed after the financial statements are completed. Then there's the basic financial statements, just a couple of quick highlights, talk about fund balance, our general fund. We did have a positive balance at the end of last year of about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The year before is about three hundred and eighty thousand, so it's pretty consistent, helps us maintain our overall, um, fund balance in relation to expenses at about twenty-four percent. So it's really kind of maintaining that consistency. Notes to the financial statement, um, one of the notes talk about our long-term debt. We are limited in the amount of long-term debt we can have. The, the state statute is ten percent of property value. We're currently one point eight nine.
All right.
So we're way below that, that threshold. Uh, but that's one of the requirements in terms of our debt. There's a section that talks about Wisconsin retirement liability and then our OPEB liability. You look at the OPEB piece, you can see that that's going down, which is the right direction. We knew that was gonna be happening and that eventually will, will, um, basically be zero probably within the next four or five years. Then there's a, a number of supplementary, um, documents that, that's included. Some of them are required. Some are, are optional, uh, supplementary requirement or documents. I think on pages sixty or sixty-one, it does list the, excuse me, the state and the federal dollars. And, you know, we received just about over twenty million dollars in state monies and another one point eight in federal dollars. So because we receive those funds, there is a requirement that we have, it's called a single audit of those dollars, so it's a little more detailed analysis. And you'll see in the findings there, they didn't have any findings. We're in a hundred percent compliance in terms of all the regulations with those dollars as well. Which is important because when we go out and, um, try to request certain grants, like federal grants particularly, they look at this kind of information and if we have any trouble in terms of managing our resources, we're less likely to get additional funds. So, uh, that's the pieces that they look at in terms of our financial statements. But that's really a financial report. The second document is a separate document, sometimes referred to as the management letter, and that's made out to the school board. It's really two purposes. One is to share with you and the district any additional changes that are coming in terms of government standards as it relates to audit processes. This is organized by the GASB, which is the Government Standards, Accounting Standards Board, which is a group of accountants that sit around the table and come up with additional accounting requirements, basically. Um, so one of them has to do with leases. We don't have a lot of leases as a school district. We have a mail machine and we have two Xerox copy machines, and that's it. Otherwise, we don't do a lot of leases, so I don't think that's gonna be a huge impact. The second one has to do, it's called fiduciary activities, and that's the GASB requirement under eighty-four. It's requiring that if we have, um, activities, what's called our trust fund, which is some fund seventy-two, and our agency accounts, which is what we call our activity accounts, that they need to meet certain new requirements. And the definition of, of those accounts basically require that we probably need to reevaluate how we manage those dollars in terms of the accounting for them. So our trust, we have two trust accounts. One's a true trust, which is our OPEB trust, and we have a couple of scholarship trusts. We already transferred those to the scholarship foundation. So we've kind of eliminated that.
Yeah, yeah.
Then the, um, agency accounts, which we refer to as our student activity accounts. Because the new requirements basically say, well, if you're gonna have those as a trust, you know, they gotta be as a trust or there's no oversight to those funds. But we have oversight. We have, we have activity directors, we have certainly students involved. Years ago, probably six or seven years ago, we went through a process and moved a lot of our student activity accounts to what we call our Fund Twenty-One. And you see those show up in the board vouchers. And then those that were more the traditional student-run activities, like a student council, stayed in Fund Sixty. With these new requirements, all those Fund Sixties are gonna go to Fund Twenty-One. So we're kind of in the process of transferring that. For our district, we already have, I think, ninety-five Fund Twenty-One accounts and I think thirty-three Fund Sixty. So for us, moving them over, we're kind of set up to accommodate that already. It's not a big change for us. For other districts that may have been running all of those activities in Fund Sixty, that's gonna be more of a burden than how they're gonna make that switch. So as a board, what you'll see probably is in the voucher listing, more Fund Twenty-One activities than you used to. That's really gonna be your change. And then we're gonna work with the buildings, uh, most of our Fund Sixty accounts are at the high school, and we'll talk with those advisors and, um, talk about some of the procedure changes, but I, it's, for us, it's not a huge change, so. And then the only recommendation the auditors had is that we go through and do a reappraisal of all of our fixed assets, which I kind of said we should do that anyway, uh, with all the construction that we've handled the last few years, so. Other than that, they didn't have any other findings.
So the reason for switching Fund Sixties into Twenty-One is?
Because they do not meet the new definition under GASB eighty-four as a, as a trust fund.
So it's merely for us paperwork?
Exactly.
Okay.
I don't really see any benefit whatsoever.
All right, yeah, well, I mean, that's, yeah, my job, that's all I see coming down from the state. It's, it's just more paperwork on my end.
Well, kudos to Bill, cause every year you go through these financial audits and they dig pretty deep, looking for something and, you know, come up with virtually nothing except for some things that are coming out.
I don't do it alone. I've got good people at work.
And over the years, you have found things that were a little deficient in.
Yeah.
We've made changes and I remember a few things and it's, but I think some of it too is we have less and less cash going through our district as opposed to, you know, all lunch money was cash, all, you know, everything that everybody bought, everybody donated. It was cash or check, it was going through the, you know, and now we have so many other avenues that it actually, that part has helped. We've got all those things in line, but there's not as much of that anymore.
All right. I think, you know, as board members, when you see the management letter from year to year, I think you're absolutely right. You're gonna see some recommendations. That's their job. They're saying some findings.
Right.
But I think if you see it, you know, over time, a twelve-page report that has the same items year after year, you're gonna have to ask people, what are we doing about these things?
Right, right.
But, yeah, I, I've got some good people in our office that, that really help and, um, these are areas that typically from a school building perspective, you know, they, you don't understand why we have to do things the way we have to. Um, but we do, and, and all of this really safeguarding district and assets and, and stewardship for our community.
Well, we do need to accept our audit report. Are there any other questions for Mr. Tron? Always looking for a motion to approve it.
I move to accept the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen financial audit report as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved and seconded to, to accept the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen financial audit report as presented. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Yeah, we'll start the budget over. Development calendar starts again. We just finished it.
Traditionally, the board, the board's approved a planning calendar. It's pretty much the same calendar as previous years. They just updated the dates. I, I did put in a, a school board, like Saturday, um, budget retreat. We've done that in past years and the board's interested in doing that. Certainly can continue to do that, so I, I use similar date. I think it was the second week of March.
It's already in my calendar right now when I read that.
When is it?
March fourteenth, tentative late.
You're gonna make me spend my birthday doing that?
It's not all day. It's tentative.
It's tentative.
Yeah, over here, okay, really changing it.
Just see, when you get done, you'll be ready to celebrate.
Great.
Eight to eleven again? More than?
Yeah, usually it's like eight to eleven.
Usually, yeah, eight thirty. When we get done.
Um, so, other questions on the budget, uh, calendar, or always looking for a motion to approve it?
So moved.
In a second?
I'll second.
So moving to second to approve the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget development calendar as presented. Any other questions? Not seen any. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Announcements?
Hey, got a few announcements for us. The East Team, that's our Elkhorn Autism Support Team, is looking for volunteers to judge soup with chili cookup.
You did that one.
Evening this March third, two thousand twenty, from five to seven PM at the middle school. Please email Sean Whitman if you're interested.
Plenty of time, people.
Now, is this, have they divided it, Rita? So some are just doing soup and some chili? Cause it's too many.
It was a lot.
That's to judge them all.
I, I can pass that on. I'm sure we could've worked anything out for anybody who's willing to come.
Can you still get in to cook? Cause my wife wants to do it.
Oh, absolutely. It's, that March third, they'll be taking, they'll be taking.
Just drop off something?
Yeah.
Yeah, we had suggested last year.
I won't be a judge because of that.
A soup group? Yeah, I guess that is a good idea.
Well, I guess if we split it out.
Well, then you can, then I can do the other one.
You can reject the chili.
That's right.
Yeah, that's true. I'll do that.
So you're in. Some actions, I'm out.
So it's a wonderful event, even if you're not going to judge, I think it's, I would love to see two times, three times the number of people there because there's enough food there for that, and it's, what, probably forty to fifty different soups and chilies altogether.
Fifty-one or something like that.
It's a fun time.
They do a, a cake auction at the end and it all goes to great cause.
And just so you know, a lot of the money that was raised, um, we used for an autism speaker, um, that came in the evening, um, about a month ago, and it was really well received and we had like over, like, over a hundred fifty people attend. It was really, really good. And now we're gonna have that same speaker back and provide some professional development for our paraprofessionals. So the money is going to, you know, professional development, good causes.
Are you gonna do the baking raffle part?
Yeah, they'll do all that stuff again too. I, I bet a lot of this stuff will come out after the New Year.
I'm just a pal I'm head.
You updated by her.
Okay.
And the, the next piece of the announcement is just a quick reminder regarding board and, um, upper-level administration roles when I communicate regarding referendums. We're able to inform the community, in fact, we have an obligation to inform the community regarding the facts, but we should not be encouraging people to vote either way. Simply encourage them to vote and then educate people. I included in your board notes a couple of memos. I cracked, it cracked me up because one of the memos was from nineteen eighty-eight, but the case law is solid on it. It hasn't changed. It's still the, the same. So, and I also included a link with the use of funds to support communication. Cause you may, um, a number of you weren't around on the last referendums, when we send out a communication or a postcard, you'll have people approach you, well, why are you spending, you know, tax dollars on this communication? It's one of our obligations to communicate about and provide facts. What we can't put on the communication is vote yes.
Correct.
Or vote no.
Correct. Which is why the, the Booster Club got involved on the last referendum, so that the Booster Club can say yes.
There's, yeah, any outside organization can organize and do a vote yes campaign or vote no campaign, whatever they want to do.
But we cannot, right.
We cannot.
You cannot say vote yes or vote no.
Yeah, that is correct. Good to know.
We can give detail.
Thank you. You can educate, yeah.
I think you might be able to say hypothetically, if I were not a board member, I would recommend, I would, but I shouldn't be.
I would. Did I spell it?
I, I do.
I can sign it and I sure give it to you.
It's, it's, I mean, there, yes, we, we don't advocate either way. We just inform the community. And, and like I shared with, and not all the time, you know, and even on the last referendums, not all the board members, I don't know how they voted either way. But what the, the vote that the board made and what you made today was to let the community decide.
Right.
So they're on the project.
Yeah, so when you get approached, which you will, which we did before, whereas people will be either for it or against it because not, you know, everybody's not gonna be, not gonna be for it. But the one thing that I always say is, you know, I, I mean, I have the same vote as you do. So I mean, we all are gonna go to the, all we did was vote to put it on the ballot, give them the opportunity. We're being very transparent
Right.
in doing so. You know, we're gonna give them all the information, we're gonna let them decide. So it's not like we're doing it behind closed doors or nothing like that.
Right.
Being very open with them.
Yeah.
And, and you can certainly speak to all the rationales to why it's needed and, and what's there or why it's voted the way you did.
If you just use the, the facts from the PowerPoint that you put together, um, that's, that's a great.
I know, I, I love the PowerPoint. Whenever I was going through it, I thought that's really good marketing.
Good information.
Right, and he said that was your plan, so.
Yeah. All right, and then, um, we have the social emotional learning pilot program, which is about to begin. Um, students in grades four and five, did I miss a grade level as well?
SOFO students and altern, and juniors at alternative high school.
Okay. Will be receiving notices, um, in regards to their students participating in the initial screener. It'll also do the parents an opt-out option. Um, the name of our screener, I forgot.
Is the DESA?
Is the DESA.
It's a student strength assessment.
And that was part of our mental health grant, and it's designed to help us identify if there's students who may need some additional supports that we may not be aware of. And then we have a closed session, uh, to review the school safety drill summaries.
All right, so looking for any motions to adjourn a closed session?
I move to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eighty-five, current one, current D to review the written evaluations of the school safety drills. The school board will reconvene in open session for action as appropriate regarding closed session business and/or to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moving to second to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five, one D to review the written evaluations of the school safety drills. The school board will reconvene in open session for action as appropriate regarding closed session business and/or to adjourn. Um, roll call vote, please.
Oh, uh, Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yeah.
Ms. Gotcha?
Yes.
Motion carried. In the closed session. So we'll take a few minute break and then we'll go.